This conference will now be recorded.
And it is being recorded. Do you want to go over the rules first?
Yes, I can do that. So the rules for remote participation and etiquette during planning commission meetings. The first part of the meeting from seven to seven thirty was agenda review, limited to staff review of agenda items with planning commission members. All questions from the public should be reserved for that agenda, for the agenda that begins at seven thirty. I noticed that a few folks had put in their names for public comment. If you could put those back in the public comment near the appropriate time, I would appreciate it. I may miss it due to the comments typically get pretty long and I don't want to miss anybody. For the public meeting, if accessing the meeting electronically and you desire to make a comment, please type your full name and address in the chat box during the courtesy of the floor. Your name will be read and you will have three minutes to make your comments. Time will be allotted for comments from those who are accessing the meeting by phone only. Speakers will again be limited to three minutes. The speaker must identify their name and address prior to making a comment. Mute your microphone to avoid background noise that may cause interference in the meeting and make it difficult for others to hear. With regards to the muting, I typically will mute callers because I found callers generally will have more of an impact on background noise. So if you do want to make a comment, please use the chat. In closing, your cooperation and adherence to these rules will be, will ensure an orderly and respectful meeting. Thank you.
Okay. We will start with the pledge of allegiance. Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America.
To the Republic.
For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We have a roll call for the planning commission to see who's here.
Yes, indeed. Brian Height.
Present.
Diane Kelly. Diane?
I'm muted.
Here.
Bill McNair.
Here.
Matthew Mo Queen. No, Matthew Mo Queen. Alan Topp.
Here.
David Wilson.
Here.
You have five out of seven members present. That is sufficient for a quorum.
Okay. All right. The next thing, agenda item two is the approval of the minutes. And these are the minutes from the November nineteen twenty twenty meeting. Are there any comments or corrections for the minutes? Hearing none. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Some.
Second.
Here.
Okay. Let's say Diane moved and Brian second. Yeah. So do a roll call vote.
Brian Height.
Aye.
Diane Kelly.
Aye.
Bill McNair.
Aye.
Alan Topp.
Aye.
David Wilson.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, thank you. An announcement there, we do have a planning commission opening. We will be doing interviews soon. There the, there's, is still time to apply if you're interested. That will be on the new webpage, I understand, which may have started today or will start soon. And if not, you can call the township number and ask for Tracy to get on the list and get the application information. So just want to announce that and we will be acting on that soon. And then the next thing in item three is a comp plan update summary. Turn that over to Dave.
So just as a comp plan update, we recently closed the survey at the end of January. The planning commission's suggestion to kind of do a final announcement for the closing. It worked. We got about fifty more respondents. So we got up over six hundred. We are currently analyzing the results to kind of put together a public opinion scenario that will then get used for guiding working groups, which brings us to the next phase of phase four, which is where we start forming working groups, which are volunteers, hopefully volunteering for an area of interest that will help make the recommendations and the goals policies recommendations for the new comp plan. We will start that phase with a kickoff meeting. That kickoff meeting will be held virtually. We're working with Michael Baker International to facilitate that digital meeting. We'll have breakout sessions for each of the focus areas and then come back for a final synopsis. Those meetings will be, all be recorded and will be put on the new website for access for people that can't make the meeting, along with digital signups for the working groups. We're still final, trying to finalize that date. We intend for each of the subject areas to be led and facilitated by a subject matter expert. We're currently working with the LVPC to kind of iron out some details and hoping we can get them to help us out and lead that discussion. Once we figure out the subject matter experts, we can get the date set. And then following that meeting, we will have the working group introduction, introductory meeting and then have a series of individual working group meetings and then reconvene for the summary of those working group meetings. So that kind of lays out the roadmap ahead. And yeah, I mean, we're kind of excited about working with Michael Baker. It's a big firm with a lot of neat planning tools, surveys and they're kind of specialized with digital engagement. So we're excited to be working with them. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dave. We'll move on to agenda item number four, which is subdivision review. We have two reviews this evening and they will consist of a staff presentation by Greg, applicant presentation, courtesy of the floor, and then a planning commission decision. So the two are the Premier Center Luxury Apartments Conditional Use twenty twenty six oh one, request for conditional use review and proposed flex building at twelve fifteen Housman Road, major plan two thousand eighteen one oh six and it's a request for preliminary final plan review. So we'll start with the Premier Center Luxury Apartments. And Greg, if you could do story?
Yes, indeed. All right. This is an application to further develop the property located at one one five one Bulldog Drive. The plan proposes the demolition of the existing Parkview Motel and associated buildings and the construction of thirty-five townhomes, twenty-five of Witchville Front Crackersport Road, six three or four-story mixed buildings containing twenty-six thousand seven hundred eighty square feet of non-residential floor space and three hundred and sixty apartments. There will also be nine hundred and nine parking spaces, stormwater management facilities and two thousand five, twenty-five, two hundred fifty-six thousand four hundred thirty-five square feet of open space on the twenty-three point five five acre site. The subject property is Zoned HC Highway Commercial and TND Commercial Retrofit Overlay. The property is being developed under the TND Commercial Retrofit Overlay District Regulations. E and B Partnership LP is the owner and applicant. Previous consideration on November twentieth twenty twenty, E and B Hotel Partnership submitted an application for the conditional use review for Premier Center Luxury Apartments to twenty twenty six oh one. At their December twentieth twenty twenty meeting, the planning commission took the plan under advisement to allow the applicant time to address the comments of the reviewing agencies. On January thirteenth twenty twenty, the E and B Hotel Partnership submitted a sketch plan application for Bizotti Parkview Major Plan twenty twenty one oh one, which is the land development portion of this. And finally, for previous history, at their October twenty-third twenty nineteen meeting, zoning hearing board denied E and B Hotels Partnership's appeals for all of the following. A use variance from section three fifty twenty-four C thirteen to allow a multifamily residential apartment as a standalone use, a variance from section three fifty forty-eight D four D from the minimum parking requirements for apartment buildings, a variance from section three fifty forty-eight D three from the parking requirements of apartments as part of a mixed-use building, and a variance of section three fifty twenty-four C thirteen from the height, from the maximum height requirement within the HC zoning district. I will skip the agency's comments and go directly to the recommendation. The Community Development Department recommends that the planning commission utilize the comments of the reviewing agencies to develop the conditions of approval for the application. Should the applicant require additional time for answering these planning commission's questions, a waiver of, from the time limitation to review their request shall be required. And that actually shall be required regardless because the deadline to review the plan is today.
Okay. Said, okay. The applicant?
Yep, present.
Okay.
Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Jim Preston here. I'm the attorney for the applicant. And there's a, we have a full complement of professionals here this evening to answer any questions that you may have. We've been in front of you before. Plan, this plan's been in front of the township and been reviewed by its staff and its, and professionals. And we were asked to answer some questions, provide additional information. We've done that. And so now we're back here before you and we're seeking a favorable recommendation on our conditional use. And we're here to answer any questions that you may have. I do want to, Greg had talked about a, a time extension and that is indeed necessary. We can't, we're at the end of the line and we don't have a problem doing that. I just want to be clear on that. We will be extending the time. The only question is till when? And I guess we'll, we'll better understand that when we see what are the results of this meeting here this evening. We, we'd like to get to the, to the board for consideration of our conditional use if we can. But with that, we stand ready to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Questions from the planning commission? Did you get that muted? Okay. Questions from the planning commission? Well, I'll start then with, I guess, what traffic? There are, there are actually, I guess, well, that's the first one is the, there's, there's some adverse impact to at least two intersections. Does? I guess the question here is the impact of traffic from this plan. Is it worse than would be for other uses of the site?
Okay, well, I'm sorry to interrupt anyone. I'm going to ask Rob Hoffman to speak to that, but I can, I can tell you, because we're, we're, we're aware of the threshold conditions here. The traffic impacts from what, let me back up a minute. The, the proposal before you this evening is consistent with, but for a single S Aldo waiver, with all of the zoning and S Aldo requirements of the township. And that, that use, that consistent use, the traffic impacts from this use are typical and are what are to be expected from, from this use. There's nothing extraordinary about those. But having said that, I'm getting into Rob's area. Rob, if you just identify yourself, please and, and address that.
Sure. Yes. Good evening, Rob Hoffman with Traffic Planning and Design. Yeah, with, with respect to that, to that comment, the, you know, as you're aware, this is in the HC zone. So if you look at the, if you look at other uses that are permitted in the HC zone, those types of uses that are allowable consist of shopping centers, restaurants, which both fast food, high turnover, banks, office parks, and, and there's a whole laundry list of others, but I'm, I just, I'm going to pick those because those are the, those are the highest traffic generators. And if you put those, if you put, you know, some, some of those uses, one, you know, certain, depending on what mix you would put of those uses or individual uses and the sizes, you could have significantly more traffic generation than is proposed under the development that's, that's before. So, you know, as Mr. Preston said, there's, there's really, there's nothing unique or unusual about the development that's, that's before you from a, from a traffic generation perspective with respect to what should be expected within that zone.
I do have a few questions. I, I didn't realize I was on mute earlier, but I guess I'll expand upon the traffic. In terms of the other high traffic generators, this, this property has a large high voltage power line easement through it. These other uses have parking requirements, have open speech requirements, different setback requirements, have approximate building size has been assumed. In terms of calculating the traffic generated from those uses, has, has the setback requirements, you know, the various easements and encumbrances on the property been considered? If there's other uses?
I think, I think your question is, you're getting more lines with, has, has a layout been done or a plan been done with those other uses? And no, there, there has not, there has not been.
So it's just a random assumption on raw numbers, I'm assuming?
Yeah, I don't, I wouldn't say like a random assumption. Maybe to give it some context, everybody's familiar with the Tillman Square Shopping Center. That site, if you were to exclude the out parcel, so the movie theater, you know, Sherwin-Williams, that stuff, you just looked at the, at the, at the core mall, let's call it itself, and, and maybe the area where, where Red Robin is and Wendy's are, and you were encompass that area, that's, that's probably about twenty acres plus or minus. So we're on a twenty-three and a half acre roughly site. So I just, I just throw that out there to hopefully help to answer, answer your question, at least give some context that it's not, it's not completely random, but, but a plan has not, a specific plan has not been developed.
Have the encumbrances on this specific site been taken into account with those other high traffic generator uses?
Well, I think, again, I think that gets back to the question is, has there been a plan developed? And no, there has not.
All right. I did notice.
Let me, let's put, let's put it this way. This is a, this is a, I'm going to try to frame it another way. This is a, it's a twenty-three eight, twenty-three and a half acre site. And one of the, one of the permitted uses is a fast food restaurant. If you were to place two fast food restaurants on this site, that would generate more traffic than the proposal that's before you. And that, you know, you could, you can obviously, you could clearly get fit two fast food restaurants on a twenty-three and a half acre site, taking into account all of those encumbrances. And obviously you could fit a lot more than that on, on this site.
Then I noticed in the review letter, there, the level of service dropped in numerous locations. These are pretty objective numbers. The increase of vehicle delay increased pretty significantly in a lot of locations. Can you speak to that and how that's related to traffic congestion, excessive traffic volumes?
Rob, let me, let me take a swipe at that one. Jim Preston here. This comes up a lot. The, the township is free, has been, will be, is free to make any traffic improvements it sees fit to its road system at any time. We start there. When you have a conditional use that's assigned to a particular property, it's assumed that the traffic impacts associated with that use, albeit if they're typical and typically associated with that use, are proper. Now, it, the way the law works is, the thing I think you're talking about are off-site improvements. Off-site improvements are really not part of this plan. We're not saying that there's not. Something happened there. That there's not impacts and that we will not participate in those with the township as part of the land development process. We will. And we'll, we'll look into those when we get into the land development process. Right now, what we're looking at is the conditional use itself. The use itself, as long as we're within the confines of your ordinance, the use itself is disassociated from the off-site impacts for the purpose of the use, for the purpose of the use, which is what we're here for this evening. There's going to be problems with intersections. There typically is when you bring in a development, but any one particular development is never the, the sole cause of that type of problem. It's extremely rare that it would be. And so it's not appropriate from a, a legal perspective to assign that all to the last man in. And the courts don't do that. So really what we're, we're here, what I'm telling you is, we're not ignoring the offsites, although we're not obligated to make offsite improvements. We're willing to have that discussion with the township and to participate in those to the extent that we can. But as far as the conditional use is concerned and the language that's in the subjective standards, the rulings in the courts are that if the use that's proposed is one that can be anticipated by assigning that use to the site, then the externalities in terms of traffic are not relevant to the consideration of the conditional use. That may not be palatable, but that's, that's, those are the rulings.
Thank you, Mr. Preston. I'm just trying to reconcile the, the one, I guess it's section three fifteen eighteen B and section H that says not create traffic congestion, hazardous traffic conditions, or excessive traffic volumes. And just my opinion, and maybe I'm wrong, but my opinion is those are objective. Traffic engineering has objective black and white numbers in terms of level of service and traffic volumes. And it does show that the level of services degrade significantly. The volume to capacity ratios degrade as well. So.
But those presume, well, that, well, let's work through it then. That calculus that you're looking at includes much more than this use. There's a level of service that's there now. If the level of service is C that's there now, that C level is not a function of this product. It can't be because this product doesn't exist. So the reasoning works this way. When you get into a, an intersection and there are levels of service, there are multiple factors that contribute to that level of service. It's not just the last man in that causes the level of service to be what it is. It's no, it's, it's no more fair to say you can't come in than it would be to say, well, no, you can come in and everybody else has to leave. You can't do that. You can't pull the intersections apart that way. And that's why, when you read the language that you're looking at there and you are taking it to be an objective standard, and there may be some objective components to it, but what the courts have ruled consistently, without a doubt, that when it comes to conditional uses and off-site traffic improvements, you can't take this incremental increase and deny a project because of its incremental increase to an off-site traffic condition, precisely for the type of things that we're talking about. It's not, that level of service is not a function of this product. It's not. It's a function of a whole lot of projects and products in the township. It's not this product. And, and if we end up going down that road, that's where we're going to end up. I've done enough of these to be able to tell you without a doubt that the courts will not allow that type of analysis, that type of condition to be enforced as an objective condition on a conditional use application.
So, so are you saying that you have demonstrated that the adverse effects or impacts shown by your client's traffic impact study are no worse than those of any other permitted use within the HC or Highway Commercial zoning district or the TND?
No. No. What I'm telling you is that the traffic impacts generated by my client's proposal are traffic impacts that one would normally anticipate from this proposal. They're putting on this site, what the zoning ordinance says belongs on this site. They can't take their property and say, I want to do A, B, C, or D. When they own the property, they have to pick from the menu that the township has provided. The township writes the menu. We don't get to do that. We get to pick from the menu. And as long as we stay with, choose a menu item, then the externalities cannot be raised as a bar against that use because those externalities include factors disassociated from this use. So when you say it's no more than any other use on the site, that, first of all, it's less than other uses you could put on the site. Because I don't think anybody's going to reasonably disagree that you couldn't put two fast food markets, operations on that twenty-some acres. But that's really not the question. The question is, this proposal, A, is it consistent with the zoning? And if it is, are the traffic impacts from this proposal to be expected from this proposal? And I think what Mr. Hoffman will tell you is that yes, this is to be expected from this proposal. So this proposal, which is a consistent compliant proposal, is generating is generating what whoever it is that assigned it to this particular land knew or should have known was going to be generated by this proposal. Are there situations in the township? Sure, the situation's all over. And as I said at the outset, any municipality is free at any time to make any off-site traffic, any traffic improvements they deem fit at any time. Those are separate and apart from the conditional use that occurs within the confines of these, this property. It's unfortunate that, that wording in the ordinance suggests something other than that because there is no something other than that. That's essentially the law of the case. What our duty is to design something that's compliant with zoning. And then what our traffic engineer does, has to do is confirm for us and for you, and for anyone that may be reviewing this in the, in the future, that yes, the traffic externalities, those impacts that flow from this site are to be expected from this site. And if the traffic impacts from this site are what's expected to come from this site, then you can't ding the developer for doing a project which generates traffic which is expected to come from this site.
I'd like to, um, add my, my voice to this, both to follow up, um, pretty much in tandem with what David Wilson has said, as well as Brian Height. Uh, I believe for conditional use, we're pointing to a few of the provisions that must be met by the developer, one of which was, um, read by David and I'll refresh. It's section three fifty eighteen B, letter H, that one of the conditions for approval of this condition is to provide a safe and efficient access to those and will not create traffic congestion, hazardous traffic conditions, or excessive traffic volumes. And I believe, um, Brian Height was, was asking the question, we're not asking about township road improvements. We're talking about the traffic that this development, um, of course, will, will generate. And it is a condition, um, and objective. When we're talking about traffic impact studies, raw numbers that talk about the level of service, um, changing significantly at several intersections surrounding this.
Sure. And that, the, the fault is mine. I'm probably not explaining this correctly. Let me try it this way. When you look, okay, let's take a particular intersection. Let's say it has a C and it's going to go from a C to a D if this use is, is implemented. So if I go back to that intersection, is, is the change in this, from the C to the D solely the function of this particular project? Or is the level of service at the intersection the function of the traffic from all the different uses, all the different directions, all the different times a day, from all the different operations and businesses that are in the area that funnel through that? It's a collection of all of those. So the level of service that, that this thing that we're talking about is not a function of this project. And I'm not asking you to take my word for it. I'm just saying that the courts have found, without exception, without exception, that when you get into the off-site improvements, as it is incumbent upon a developer to do no more and generate no more traffic than what would be allowed on that site through zoning, what would typically one could expect from the zoning. And if they do no more than that, then what happens at that intersection? It's not their fault. It may be a contributing factor, but there's, everyone else that passes through that intersection contributes to the level of service, not this particular developer. So if this developer lives within the confines of delivering to the township, nothing more than what the township says you're allowed to deliver in terms of the density on this site and the externalities. They've met this thing that everybody keeps reading to me. I know what it says. But I also know what it means.
So you're saying that you have proven that? You have shown us that?
I don't have to prove that. I don't have to show that. This is where we got off track last month. And then somebody wanted a memo about this. That's not our burden to shoot, to prove that. It's just not.
It, it's not your burden if it's subjective, right? If it's a objective, I believe it is the applicant's burden.
Okay, well, then I, I've said what I've said. If we're, I guess we'll just agree to disagree.
Would it be appropriate at this point, um, to ask our solicitor to provide guidance, um, on this? There was this difference of opinion at the end of our last meeting.
So I agree, um, somewhat with what Attorney Preston has said. But I, I do think, Mr. Preston, that you have oversimplified the issue. And I would agree with what, um, Mr. Wilson and Mr. Height and, and Ms. Kelly said, that while you can look at section three fifty eighteen B of the zoning ordinance and say that most of those standards are subjective, I think there are objective components. And I think, in fact, you actually said that a couple of minutes ago. And so when we're specifically talking about traffic standards and the one that everyone keeps pointing to, I, I think you said it yourself that, um, it's, it's your job to prove that there's nothing uncharacteristic about this particular development that would make it create any more traffic or any more intense traffic conditions than another similar permitted use on the property. And I think what I'm hearing the commission members say is that they don't think you've shown that yet. Um, and, and it may very well be the case that you can show that. But I think, given what you have presented so far, I'm hearing from the planning commission members that they think you may not have done that.
Okay. That there, that's fine. I don't know what else to tell you. I can tell you this. There are other uses that you could put on that site that are permitted by the zoning ordinance that would generate more traffic than we are generating. And the traffic that we are generating in our proposal is typical and is to be expected from this proposal. There's no surprises here. This is what you get when you put this use here. We're wholly within the confines of the traffic that would be generated from this use. We haven't exceeded that in any way. There's nothing unusual, extraordinary about this particular project or proposal in terms of its traffic flows, traffic counts, traffic generation. There just isn't. So I don't know what else, I don't know what you want me to prove.
Well, I mean, if we're, if we're, if we're looking still at letter H, um, and what the zoning officer had pointed out, which was that the TIS that was provided indicates an adverse impact to at least two intersections. The applicant has not demonstrated that the adverse impacts shown by the TIS are no worse than any of those other permitted uses. So I guess this is more of a question for your traffic engineer than it is a legal question. Is there something that the traffic engineer could offer, um, in the way of evidence on that issue that would, that would prove what you're telling us?
Prove that, that there are, that, well, I'll ask him directly. Rob, are you there?
Here.
Rob, the use that's being proposed here for this site, you're familiar with the traffic, traffic that's being generated by this use? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Is the traffic that's being generated by this use traffic that would typically be generated by this use?
By these types of, the types of uses that are proposed? Absolutely.
And is it the type, is, is the traffic generation from this site, uh, to be expected? If I were to zone this site and come up with a menu of uses that can go on there, including this use, and the developer selected this use, are the traffic impacts, the traffic generations from this site, something that I should expect as part and parcel of that?
Something that you should expect, yes.
Okay. And I guess the second question is, it, it's sort of redundant. It's like, but the site could likely be developed with uses, again, permitted in the zoning ordinance, that would generate even more traffic than this. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Now.
But what are those?
Pardon?
What are those numbers?
What are what numbers?
So let, so let me, let's.
They're uses.
So let's go back to, if I go back to two, two fast food restaurants. Because that's, that's the number I happen to have in front of me. So to, to, to put it into context, the numbers I have in front of me, that the, the PMP trips for the development that we're proposing are three hundred and seventy-nine trips. If you were to put the fast food, I'm sorry, the, that was what I was gonna, let me give you the daily trip because that's the big one I was going to give you. So you know, over the course of a day, how many trips are. So that our, our proposal is three thousand five hundred and forty trips on a daily basis. So if you were to do two fast food restaurants, that would be four thousand two hundred and forty trips per day. Now, again, there's, you could fit a lot more than two fast food restaurants on there. You could, you could do, you know, a shopping center. And if you did a hundred thousand square foot shopping center, that would be, again, roughly forty-five hundred trips.
I think, I think that's part of the confusion is when you look at an off-site intersection and then you add in our traffic, you can be of the opinion that we are causing that level of service. But we don't cause any level of service. The level of service is a function of everyone that uses that intersection. It's not just us. We're not the ones that, if there's an adverse impact and a drop in the level of service, then tell the other people to stay home. I'm, I'm being facetious, obviously. But we're not the persons that have, we're not responsible for the level of service at an intersection. So when you come, when you're dealing in terms of a conditional use, the law says, the courts say, you have to look at the use and you have to view it in the context of if it's a, if it's a permitted use at the site, you can't now make it an unpermitted use because it makes too much traffic. It doesn't make any sense. The use is permitted, but we're not going to permit it. Why aren't you going to permit it? Because it makes too much traffic. Then what did you put it there for? That's the circularity of the argument. And when you get into the language of this piece you're talking about, that we have to prove that we're not degrading an intersection, that's an inane argument. We don't, we're not the intersection. The level of service at the intersection is not us. And I'm telling you, that's how these get reviewed. You see it an awful lot in cases dealing with warehouses and so forth. The externalities, the offsites, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So why did you study the intersections if it's not your responsibility?
I think we were asked to, but I'll defer to, uh, I'll defer to Rob.
Yeah, that's correct. Uh, we, we, we talked to your township engineer and they provide a scope of what they, what they, what's, what they would like to see studied.
And as I said, we're not, we're not opposed to working on those intersections, working with the township in terms of land development. But I know how these things work. And I'm, I'm, I'm probably, okay, I appear pigheaded and obstinate. I've done so many of these things. I see the call boards lit up. We're going to be here for another three hours talking about traffic. And I know where this is going to end up. And it's, it's not, we're not, we're not responsible for that level of service. Are we going to work with the township? Yes. Is it properly a function of land development? Yes. Is it, is it something we knew we're going to talk about all night for a conditional use? Probably. But it's, it's not relevant.
I, I guess when you say you, you're willing to work with the township, what, what does that mean?
Um, what does that mean? I'm going to defer to my, my counterparts here in terms of what would that, what that might mean. I don't know. Rob, you want to, you have any suggestions or?
Somebody was going to say something? Go ahead.
No, that's.
Rob? Mr. Hoffman, are you still with us?
Yes.
Yeah, the question is, what, what are some things that we might be discussing with the township if, I, I don't know, as we go through the land development process?
Um, I think, you know, whether, whether there are certain improvements that, that could be made or that contributions could be made towards, uh, to improve traffic situations. I don't think that anything's been defined at this point. Given that, given that we're, we're really talking about the use at this point and trying to determine, are we, you know, i- is this, is this project going to get an approval for a conditional use? I mean, when we get to land development, we start to drill down into those details.
But you're under no obligation to do that. Correct?
Well, no, we never, but we, but we never have been. That's.
I understand that. So we're concentrating on what's going on internally to your site, even exiting your site, you know, and we're trying to get quantifiable data of what's going on. And, and part of that is other uses that are permitted. And you haven't shown us that.
I, I don't understand the question. Other uses that are permitted?
More of a statement that you haven't shown us what the traffic impacts are for the two restaurants. He reads them. It could be, you know, you could do different.
I don't need to. I need to show you that the traffic impacts from this use are typical of this use, consistent with this use. We haven't overtrafficked this use. I don't have to show you what a Wawa does or what a Burger King does. I think that.
But they brought, you brought it up. You're.
No, we didn't. We didn't bring it up.
You brought up the fast food restaurant.
No, we were asked a question initially at the outset. We don't fit, you need to show us that your traffic is less than other uses that could be put on the site. I believe you asked the question.
I would, yes.
Well, we don't need to do that and we didn't bring it up. You brought it up. We don't need to do it. We tried to answer your question. I'm sorry?
It appears we keep going around to the same.
Yes, I, I agree.
The opinions that our ordinance does have a provision for conditional use that speaks to this. Um, and you, um, have said a number of times that you, you don't agree with that or, you know, so I, I, I don't know what else.
Well, no, I did, you take, I do agree with that. And we've met it because we've shown you that the traffic that this project generates no more traffic than you would typically expect from this project. We do have a burden to do that. We've done that. But we don't have to go on an exploratory mission throughout the township to look at levels of service for conditional use. That we don't have to do. The adverse impact would be if we generated twice the amount of traffic that the governing body expected to see on this site when they assigned this use to this site. That would be an adverse traffic impact. That would generate the congestion that the courts are looking for and talking about. That would do it. We're within the confines, we're within the limits permitted by your ordinance. Like I said, you can't say this use is permitted at this site, but oh, it's not permitted at this site. Either it is permitted or it's not. It is, it's permitted by conditional use. The traffic question gets answered when we demonstrate that the traffic is what you would expect from this use. We did answer, I'm not saying we're, we're ignoring that. I'm saying we've answered that. We've answered it.
Any more questions from the planning commission?
I'd like to bring up another topic that's not traffic related, but just the general density of your development. In your material, you've, you've indicated that, that you will have, I think, thirty-five townhouses and three hundred and sixty apartments in this project. Is that correct?
I'm going to turn it over to the technical side. Go ahead.
That's correct.
For a total of three hundred and ninety-five residences. And, uh, if we put that on your, uh, twenty-three and a half acres, we get about nineteen residences or dwelling units per acre. And I'm not quite sure what the, what the maximum density is for that, uh, permitted. permitted, but I suspect it's about 15. Uh, if I'm correct, am I?
Well, what's, what's correct is that the residential component, which is just the townhouses is 15 per acre. So if you look at the townhouses alone on the acreage that they're on, which is I think 2.8 or 2.78, that density is about 12.6. So we're under the 15. Apartments are part of mixed, mixed use buildings, which are commercial as defined. Commercial. So the mixed use buildings are commercial. There is not a density requirement for mixed use commercial buildings. So the, I, we can't be held to the 15 units per acre because those buildings do not have a density requirement on them. The requirement of density ultimately would be, would be governed by other criteria in the commercial district. Such as impervious coverage, building coverage, parking requirements. That's, those are the requirements that would end up limiting the number of dwelling units per acre. But it's not the 15. The 15 is only relevant on the residential area of the plan, which are the townhouses.
All right. Is it correct for me to say that when all is said and done, counting the townhouses and the apartments, you will end up with, uh, 395 dwelling units in your whole project?
That's correct.
That's mathematically correct. And again, I did the simple arithmetic and I, I get about 17 per acre. And I would just notice that all of the adjoining areas are, I believe, are three or three dwelling units per acre. So your place is a, a great, has a great deal more density than the adjoining, uh, properties. Is that
That's correct, but we're well, we're, we're well within the ordinance requirements.
Oh, all right. As, as you've chosen to interpret them. Okay.
It's not how I'm interpreting them. It's how they are interpreted. We're, we're complying with the zoning ordinance and I believe staff has agreed with the interpretation of the ordinance, which, which is all we have to go by.
Is that a correct statement, Greg?
That is a correct statement.
Thank you.
I, I have another question. In the, uh, conditional use review, the, um, comment about all applications for development of a tract as a TND shall be accompanied by and comply with the manual of written and graphic design standards and appendix C, et cetera, et cetera. And then the review comment indicates the design manual is incomplete and not consistent with the design standards found within appendix C of the zoning ordinance. It, uh, continues to go on to discuss, uh, the parking garage, parking garages, and there's some ambiguity in terms of the proposal and, um, how things can be interpreted with this project. So it looks like some of that needs to be cleared up and, um, in terms of some elevations and, um, facades and whatnot. So, um, can you speak to provide a response to that, uh, review comment? And how you intend to address that?
Yeah, that's, that's not legal. Uh, who's gonna?
Seth. I, I, this is Seth Shapiro. I, I can, I can comment on that. Um, yes, we actually reviewed this, um, and we will be providing, um, two additional pages into the, the, uh, review manual to show the elevations of the mixed use building. Show how the, uh, the garage areas of those buildings are screened from the, from the internal streets.
Those are very important to this project.
Well, Seth, you, you have an elevation you can show this evening, correct?
I do, I do. It's just, it's black and white though. Um, and you know, we'd like to, to render them up though. I'm happy to, to, uh, share my screen. To show those.
I can make you presenter.
I think it would be helpful if you could at least show the areas we're talking about and how they will be visually obscured.
Yep, here we go. Okay. Does everybody see that?
I can see it. Yes.
Right. So the, these are, this is one of the
Maybe blowing it up a little bit if you can, Seth?
So this is, these, this is one of the buildings, um, that's along the main street, actually around the, the sort of the central square. And you can see that there, this is sort of the ground level use and there are openings, um, to the garage area here. And like I, as I had mentioned, we're going to render this and show some more detail about how this area is actually going to be screened. And actually it's going to be both an architectural and, and a landscape issue. Um, so we'll add those, uh, to the, to, to the document. We had thought that our perspective renderings had made that clear. Um, clearly we were, we were, we were wrong about that. Um, so obviously areas where we have garage openings, it can't be, can't be screened because you need to access the garage. But areas like this that are open to the garage to provide ventilation, uh, for the portion of the mixed use building where there is parking on the ground floor will be screened.
And it's not the entire, it's not the entire height that's so if you look, if you look at the, if you look at that particular area as an example, there's a, uh, maybe just blow it up if you can a little bit more Seth, so people can see the actual opening. Is not the entire height of the garage. You can see the top and bottom would already have screened some type of element of, uh, that you couldn't see through, but there's a, what I would call the part in the middle that's open that would be screened. So you couldn't see inside the garage or even know that it's, that there's parking there.
But, but you, you're still developing that, that the finalize the screening, right?
Well, the screening is finalized. We just don't have the, the rendering with it on this evening. But when we go to the board of commissioners, we would be happy to provide that to them and intend to do that.
How tall are these buildings?
Uh, this building here, uh, let's see, this building to the top here is about, uh, between 45 and 50 feet. Um, you know, some, some, some elements of the building that are decorative may go, may go further. And they're all at least 300 feet step back, um, from the, uh, the residential district. I believe, Tony, do we remember, what, what was the height limit at 300 feet?
I believe it's 60 for those buildings. Is that right, Kevin? Is it 60?
That's correct. 60 feet.
Now that's not the town, that's not the townhomes. That's just the mixed use buildings are 60. The townhomes are
High limit is 35.
Thank you.
Any more questions from the planning commission?
I'm trying to figure out how to stop sharing my screen.
Okay.
I, I have one more. I guess it's relatively, um, I can do the comment, but just, um, terms of the, the townhomes, um, and central mailbox system, there's a comment regarding that. Preference would be that, that the cluster mailboxes do not face the public road because we, we wouldn't want a situation where people are coming home from work and then parking along the side of Cracker Sport.
Yeah, we, I can, I can, I can, I can address that. So everybody, so everybody's aware, um, I'm in communication with the postmaster now and nothing has, I haven't, it's been very difficult to get ahold of them, but the mixed use buildings will have, uh, all internal, um, mail delivery. As will they have package delivery. Now we're going to be working out with the postmasters to how the townhomes are delivered. I suspect that we will end up having, um, maybe a gang box or so within the development. For those townhomes, although that hasn't been quite determined yet. So whatever the postmaster tells us they're going to be doing, we'll encourage them not to have individual mailbox out onto Cracker Sport, but we'll work with them to determine what, what they require. So once they, once they made a determination, we'll certainly pass along the township's feedback to them. And, and the township can as well. Um, but our preference would be to keep them internal.
Thank you. And, and, uh, the townhomes along Cracker Sport, will they have access to Cracker Sport? Like, uh,
They will have pedestrian, uh, Brian will have pedestrian access to Cracker Sport. But their vehicular access and their garages are from the rear. So all vehicular access to the townhomes will be via the alley that's behind them.
And the reason why I ask that question is just because they don't have vehicular access, they could be parking on Cracker Sport. And that gets to the road widening during the land development aspect as well. Cause if, if I'm dealing with, if I'm living in one of those townhomes and I can park on Cracker Sport and don't have to go internally, I'm going to do that. So just food for thought for the future.
Okay, thank you. But, but I think for the most part, and, and those that live in these townhomes are going to be, you know, somewhat larger townhomes actually with two car garages. And I think for the most part, people will want to park either in the garage and access to townhome through the garage like most do. I, I would, I would think that very few would park out front, um, along Cracker Sport, but
Well, I, I'm, I'm thinking more of visitors and, and family gatherings and that kind of stuff. So but I agree with you. I, I would prefer to park, uh, both of my cars in my garage. Although I can only fit one car in a two car garage. So thank you.
Yeah, and there's plenty of parking to the rear of the townhouses as well to accommodate, uh, visitors. So I, I mean, you might be right. I suspect some people might park at Cracker Sport, which they're entitled to do. And it's a, you're allowed to park there. There's no, I, I don't believe the township has an ordinance that prohibits it. Uh, so you're allowed to park there, but it's not something that would be encouraged.
I have a, a general, um, I guess, real estate question. Um, do you intend the apartment, apartment units to be market rate? Same with the, the townhomes. I believe you're intending to rent them out. And if so, what are the, um, you know, you know, typical market rate rents for apartments and townhomes?
Well, they will be market rate, both the apartments and the townhomes will be. Um, we're looking to develop a luxury apartment here. That's, uh, what we're trying to do. So I think they would be at least in line with all the other, um, apartment complexes that you see either in the township or surrounding the township. I would suspect that they would be in the upper, you know, maybe $1,800 range or 16 to 18. And the townhouses will probably be, you know, $2,000 or so, uh, per month in that range. So, yeah, I don't, I would suspect that they would be in line, at least in line with, um, all the other apartment house types. And again, this is going to be, well, we would like to believe a luxury community with all the amenities that we're providing and the main street boulevard coming down. And I mean, it's just something that we would expect to be, that people would want to live here and we would expect to, to be charging them a rent that would be, you know, again comparable, at least comparable to others, if not more.
Thank you.
And Brian, just to your point to regarding the garages and, and where people will park, I think we all, uh, know that oftentimes garages double as sheds or storage units. And, you know, it's quite possible that especially the townhomes and limited storage in the facility itself, they may use their garages for storage. So it's certainly something that, um, we need to take into consideration.
Okay. Any other comments, questions from the planning commission? All right, we will now turn it over to, uh, questions. I guess put questions into the chat and, um, I would just, don't put, just there, there's a huge line of chats. So if you would like to speak, please put in your name and address and we will call you in order starting now. We have David Burke, 1436 Buck Trail Road.
Yes, uh, thank you. Um, I have three slides. Uh, first one though covers uh, the granting of conditional use standard 350-18. And, uh, it's been discussed in some length, but I'll just review quickly. The board of commissioners shall approve any, any proposed conditional use only if they find sufficient evidence that any proposed use will be compat, E, letter E, be compatible with the character and type of development existing in the area that surrounds the site. As was pointed out, the site is, the surrounding site is basically R3, R4, single homes. H is provide safe and efficient access to roads and will not create traffic congestion, hazardous traffic conditions or excessive traffic volumes. Again, that's discussed at quite some length. I'd like to present a, uh, a slide that has uh, numbers on it. I think it's most effective if we do it in that manner. Uh, so if I can have access. It's the first time I've, so we pay.
Hang on. Chairman, is it okay to make him presenter?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Bear with me, Dave.
All right.
I'm gonna find you in the list.
Oh, okay.
Gotcha.
All right. I clicked the screen, correct?
Yeah, it should ask you to be presenter. And you
Uh, go to meeting needs to accessibility features. Okay. Click the screen. Not now or open system preferences. You know, which one I
At the, there should be three little buttons, mic, camera and screen.
Yes, if I, I can't, if I screen, nothing happens.
And you click screen and nothing happens?
Right. I have in front of me though, something that says needing needs to use accessibility features. There's two choices, not now or open system preferences.
Not now.
Okay. Now I click screen?
Yep.
I got the same thing again.
And then it, there should be a option to share your desktop. Dave?
Yes.
Can you email me the, um, slide that you'd like to show and then we can come back to you and I can present it. That's okay?
I have two slides, so, okay.
Okay.
I'll email them to, what's your email address?
Address.
I'm sorry?
You have my email. You do have my email. Yep. Okay. So will, is it okay to come back to you?
Sure. But if your email address or send it to me.
I'll put it in the chat.
Okay, great. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Oh, hang on. Okay, so Dave will hand it over to the next
Great.
Um, I'm there and I'll get back to you. I'll let you know when I get that email and we'll bring it back in.
Thank you.
Um, next we have Susan. I apologize if I pronounced your name wrong. Reherig, 1308 Antler Court. Thirteen oh eight Antler Court. Susan?
Yes.
There you are. Gotcha.
The question I have is the developer continues to use the term luxury. I'd like to know if there's a standard definition. Does it have to do with cost per square foot? Or with certain, you know, standards as far as quality of materials?
I'm, I'm, I'm not sure how to answer that.
Well, then don't use the term.
Okay, so, does that answer your question?
No, but that's all right. But that's the point is you use the term luxury, but there's no definition of it.
Okay.
We expect the, we expect the development to be of high quality.
Okay, next we have David Torrey, thirteen fifty-one Deerfield Drive. David?
Okay, my, my question is, has Lanta been contacted regarding service to this site? And what has been there, what ha, if so, what has been their response?
Yes, they have. And their response in writing was that they, that they do not intend to service the site.
Okay, I was on the Lanta board for five years and I was involved in the Lanta five year plan. The whole concept of the Lanta five year plan was to address the high density units. The mixed use to the units to provide service to reduce traffic issues.
After the last meeting, the commission asked us to reach out to Lanta and we did. I personally reached out to them via email and the response I got back from them that I shared with the township staff. Was that they do not intend to service the site. That's what they, that's what they said.
And I would say one of the reasons is that how do you get the buses in and out of there? On that day, it goes back to the traffic and the routing.
We've shown, we've, we provided to the township. Truck turning templates for buses, for fire apparatus and everything else. They have been submitted to the township and. The roads do. All those apparatus and busing can navigate around the site. So, and we've also reached out to the Parkland School District. As well, and we got feedback from them as to where they went both bus stops and we placed those bus stops on. The IZET plan to show where they will be at the intersections. So if, if Lanta doesn't wanna service the site, I can't. I mean, we're willing to have them here. They just have no intention on doing that.
So that what we have is no alleviation of it, any hope of alleviation of traffic density. By mass transit.
It's not to say they wouldn't do it in the future. I don't know.
Okay, well, stands, we don't have, we don't, and I don't blame them for not wanting to service it. Way out of route. End of my comments.
Okay, where were we? That was Dave. John, you said you'd like to speak, but could you please provide your full name and address? John. John, you can type your full name and address in the chat. I have Chris Holdridge, twelve fourteen Country Lane.
Hi, yes. I have a question about the, the traffic study. I, I looked at it only briefly, but. I did not see the intersection of Ridgeview and Parkland Drive analyzed. And I know that's a cut through for many of the people in the neighborhoods. Is there, why was that intersection not analyzed? I, I can imagine there'd be a lot of backed up traffic at that intersection. Particularly in the morning.
When, when we determine the scope of the traffic study. That, that's based on a discussion that we have with the township engineer and get their input on what intersections they feel are, are the necessary intersections to be included. And that, that was not included as an intersection.
Okay, thank you. I have Dave Burke's slide, so if we can, Dave, you can talk. I will share my screen.
Okay, I can't see your screen.
Should be coming up, oh, wait. Having technical difficulties too. Everybody should see that now.
Blow it up a little bit.
I don't see it. Do I have to click on something?
No, it's there. It's there on mine.
I'm sorry?
I, I see it on my can. Well, I guess I can make it bigger for myself. Okay.
Yeah, it's the word documents is kinda tricky.
Okay.
All right. I can't see it, but I, I have a copy here. I'll just read off of it, okay?
Go ahead.
Okay, the object of this screen is to take a look at how the neighborhood and the traffic change. With the addition of the Premier Center. The first chart up there shows the number of dwellings in each of the developments. That are adjacent or near to the, the Premier Center. Parkland Farms has ninety dwellings. Deerfield has one hundred and twenty-five dwellings. Those are the two developments that are directly adjacent to Cracker Sport Road and nearest to Premier Center. Spring House West, which is much further north, has ninety and Spring House Farms has two hundred and sixty-five. Total number of dwellings in those four developments is five hundred and seven. Premier Center Apartments has three hundred and ninety-five dwellings, as it is proposed now. And nine hundred and nine parking spaces. What that means is that the Premier Center has eighty-four percent more dwellings. Than the two adjacent developments. Parkland Farms in Deerfield, eighty-four percent more dwellings than those two adjacent. Developments. Pre, the Premier Center has, will increase by sixty-nine percent, the number of dwellings in the area. That area is the one bounded by three oh nine, Walbert Ann Avenue, Spring House Road. And Route twenty-two. So. There's a tremendous influence or effect on the neighborhood by. Spring, by the Premier Center in terms of the number of dwellings, the size of the dwellings. All of those developments are on R three and R four lots, as Mr. Tobe previously said, with a few on R two. If you say that with dwellings come automobiles, and they do. Let's assume that there is one and a half per apartment. And two per house. The Premier Center has thirty-eight percent more automobiles than the two adjacent developments, Parkland Farms in Deerfield. Thirty-eight percent more automobiles than those two adjacent developments. If you look at that, those four developments, Premier Center will increase by fifty-two percent. The number of automobiles in that area, fifty-two percent increase in automobiles. Okay, if you go to the next slide, Dave. Is it up there?
Yep, part of it, the top part, I'll, I can.
Okay, thank you. Okay, how about the traffic? This location. Makes the property access challenged. In fact, that's what makes Mr. Preston's argument about two fast food places, kind of a theoretical argument, because in theory, he's probably right. But two fast food places wouldn't survive on that location because of its location. Nobody can get to it. You can't see it from any highways. The only people that would probably access it were, would be the people in those adjacent developments. They're the only ones who would know about it. So the problems are, using Bulldog Lane, Ridgeview is an acknowledged problem now for traffic seeking access to Route three oh nine. Adding the Premier Center traffic would make it much worse. In fact, if you look at page eighteen of the traffic study, that particular intersection is pointed out as being a. What are the words that are used here? All the study intersections will operate at an acceptable overall inters, intersection level of service. Or better, under the twenty twenty-five projected conditional scenarios. With the exception of intersection of Route three oh nine and Ridgeview Drive during the AM peak hour. So again, the traffic study even points that out. Cracker Sport, the middle school has a line of cars in the morning and afternoon dropping and picking up students. In addition to school buses, also making a left turn onto Spring House Road is very dangerous because of the poor line of sight. Looking south due to the Route twenty-two overpass.
Mr. Burke, your, your, your time is, is up.
A slight bit more. In fact, I talked to Greg about this and he said I could have an extra minute.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. In fact, the, the residents typically will take, many of them will take a shortcut into the school district area. And then get out onto Spring House Road that way because you just can't, you just can't see looking to your right. Winchester Road is probably gonna become the default road, route, already described by neighbors as a speedway. Most of the garages face the street requiring backing out, which is described by neighbors as difficult with the current traffic loads. Just a few notes and it'll take thirty more seconds. Many neighborhood streets do not have sidewalks and residents are often walking out. Walking and their children are riding their bicycles on the streets. Some streets like Parkland Drive are as narrow as thirty feet. Number three, there is a park on Winchester Road to which many children walk or ride their bicycles. And number four, many students from the neighborhood walk to the middle school by crossing or using Winchester Road. That's it. Thank you, and I appreciate the extra time.
Okay.
Picking up, yep, you're welcome. Picking up the comments, we have Don Sheetsley, fourteen eleven Hampton Road.
Yep, that's me. So we spent the last meeting talking about traffic issues at three oh nine. At Lakeview and at Bulldog. We talked also about the other developments being built on the other side. With the, the old folks home. So I'm trying to figure out what's been done to help that issue fix. There's traffic issues everywhere. We talked about the last meeting. It sounds like legally, there's not a problem, but trust me, if you live in that area, it's a problem. Come on, man. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, next we have Monica Hodges, seventeen oh seven Penns Crossing.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you very much. So we have here is a proposal for a high quality development. It's obviously permitted by zoning. As terrible as that decision was, but the proposed use, as Mr. Burke said, shouldn't be. Adversely effective to the health, safety and welfare of, of the public in the surrounding community. And I, this proposal is doing that. It's affecting the quality of life of this neighborhood. And in terms of traffic, that's one of the big safety issues, light, glare, density and so forth. The two experts here are the seventy plus people whose neighborhood is being violated. Their neighborhood is being violated and the traffic patterns are, they're unsafe. Of course, like you said before, because of this development, there are, there will be this traffic problem, but. It's not a, a good position to be in. So in general, I don't think this proposal has any general compatibility with the surrounding properties either. It's not in character with the neighborhood. I've said this before, I'll say it again, just because you can, it doesn't mean you should. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Daniel Schuler, forty-three thirty-four Valley Drive. Danil, did it? Ms. Schuler, are you there? We can come back. John Carroll Lee, forty-two thirty-six Winchester Road. John, I think you said you were calling in. Unfortunately, all the caller, okay. I typically handle the callers after we go through the chat, so John, I will call on you after. I'll just go through the callers at the, after we finish, who's listed in the chat. And. We have Steve Dutton, fifteen ten North Fortieth Street.
Hi, thanks. This, this is my first meeting with this. We're relatively new to the area, so I apologize if this has already been addressed at some point. But thinking about, one, is there any way to project? What this type of development would attract in terms of school age children, people? And has the schools been brought into the conversation to sort of say whether or not they could even. You know, appropriately handle a possible influx of new students?
I can handle, I can handle that in a general terms. We do meet with the Board of Ed representatives and discuss pending developments. And we do that annually for sure. And typically, if there's something they hear about, they ask and we provide information to them. So, yeah, they're, they're, they are aware of this one.
Okay, thanks.
Next, we have. Oh, boy, I'm gonna, I'm sorry. Oh, wait. Ara, do you?
I'm, I'm unmuted. I, I, I'm from forty eleven Winchester Road and I'd like to support David Burke's arguments. I live on this road. I've been living in this neighborhood for approximately three years. And I'll tell you, on the corner of Fortieth and Winchester, just this year alone, I witnessed two accidents and there's a stop sign. There on Fortieth that people constantly blow and I, and I, and it's been more relevant. A situation, I think, with the development above us now, above on Walbert. So I joined his arguments, the, the access route would directly affect Winchester. It would become a speedway more than it is. And this is, this is a community that the people, a walking community. Particularly now with COVID, everyone is out. everyone is out, out walking with their kids. I mean, this is not, this is not good for the community. Everyone joins that. And if Mr. Burke has more, wants to say more things, I yield my time to him.
Hey. Thank you for your time. I guess I'll, I'll give it back for the time that I spent previously over overtime. Thank you. But I do support everything that and traffic and safety are paramount and need to be considered by this board.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have David Bach, 1431 North 40th.
Hi, testing, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Hi, everyone. Good evening. My wife and I and four children reside in Spring House Farms. We've been here for 15 years. Let me start by just saying I have a few points and I completely agree with the concerns that we've read, that we've heard so far. And actually, if those of you on the board take a moment to scan some of the chat comments, you'll see that you have a community here that is gravely concerned with this project. This project, in my opinion, looks good on paper, but from a practical standpoint, it is, I don't want to say disastrous, but it's completely not compatible with the surrounding area. There are some big complications here and they have yet to be adequately addressed. I think the proposed size and scope and density we're talking about here is excessive. You've already heard when David Burke presented that the, the project presents or represents at minimum a 69% increase in the number of dwellings. It's, it's a huge increase and it's going to have a negative impact. Point two, those 400 dwellings that we're talking about are going to translate into a lot of incremental cars. I mean, the project itself is calling for more than 900 parking spaces. Even if not all of those are used, most of those spaces, they're going to have cars in them. And I know that a majority of those cars, I know this in my heart, they're going to be driving right down Winchester Road, right through my neighborhood and literally right next to my house. I live on Winchester. And if you don't think that this is something that's going to change the character of a neighborhood, the safety of a neighborhood, the look and feel of a neighborhood, I don't know what else would. Point three, I appreciate the traffic study discussion. I can't say that I'm an expert in, in all of the data there, but I did take a look at it and the devil is in the details. When you peel back the onion on the assumptions and some of those results, I can't help but think and notice that the study is incredibly, what I would call generalized. It's incredibly theoretical. I don't know how to say it other than, you know, it's not completely accurate to the realities on the ground. Here's an example. If you turn to page 10, table eight, it talks about trip distribution. It's a key concept here. So let me ask, for those of you, right, we all live in this neighborhood. If you need to travel east, let's say you need to run to Target, you go to 15th Street or Bethlehem for that matter. And let's say you're at the motel site and there's an exit that's directly opposite that feeds right into Winchester. So how do you go? What's the route that you take to any of these places? Well, bing, 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 it's obviously Winchester, right? It is the default for a majority of trips. For sure, it is the most direct way to 22. We know it. We live here. So if we know all of this, can you explain to me why the trip distributions in the study are so darn low for Winchester? We know the reality is completely the opposite. It actually says 0% for residential and only 10% for commercial. Seems a bit low, don't you think? And I hope you can hear the sarcasm in my voice. And it lists a whopping 10% of people who will use the 22 interchange on Cedar Crest. And aside from that being way underestimated, does the study mention how those cars are even going to get to the 22 interchange on Cedar Crest? In case you're wondering, the answer is no. It's left out of the study and the answer of course is again Winchester. If people learn that Bulldog Road backs up at, at the 309 light, right? Because it's, you know, it's like a 15 second light. Why would people going east go to use that route at all? The study says they will. Don't they know they're going to sit in 22 traffic for an extra mile if they go that way? Aren't people going to figure it out, how to save themselves time? I'm sure you and I figure it out. Yeah, Winchester to 22, much faster. The study unfortunately didn't figure this out. And so one of my key points then is that I get the methodology in the study, but it's again, it's just too theoretical. It's misinformed in some way. You know, I teach undergrads and one of the things that I mentioned to them is that bad data yields bad decisions. And that's where we're going here. That's, that's what we have. This study is grossly underestimating the volumes on Winchester. It's the same thing, by the way, I mean, I could keep going, right, with the new vehicle trips that are mentioned in the study. The study says that we can expect 330 new vehicle trips during a weekday peak hour. Yet, 330 trips, that's it. We have 395 new dwellings, 900 parking places. Doesn't 330 trips sound a little low therefore? It's not even one car per dwelling. It's like 0.8 cars per dwelling. We know that the average
the average Sorry? Your, your five minutes has been used.
Let me wrap up in the next 30 seconds then. Right, we know, my point here is that if you're using this study to inform your decision making, then please, please, please take a harder, more critical, closer look at this because there are clear flaws in the conclusions of the study. It's grossly generalized. There are over 60 houses whose driveways directly feed out onto Winchester Road. Not six and not 16, but 60. Driveways that touch and connect right into, into Winchester. My kids play basketball in the driveway. They ride their literal scooters. And it's, it's incredibly challenging to back out already. Cars are coming way too fast. And now you're adding this huge mix of some 300 to 900 new cars. Any rate, I also finally spoke with Parkland Transportation and they shared with me that there are 26 bus stops specifically on Winchester Road. You've got 150 kids hanging out waiting for a bus on Winchester Road. And there are no sidewalks in most of Spring House Farms. My kids are included waiting on the bus. And I stand there with them and we watch cars, the flow of cars, and now that, that's just going to increase dramatically.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Next, we have Jacob Roth, 1499 White Oak Road.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right, I have, I have two main points to make. The first is more of a case study in regards to what Mr. Burke said, which I think, you know, his comment and his analysis was, was spot on. If you ever really want to get a feel for what the current situation on Winchester Road or Crackersport Road is, when the weather's nicer, take a walk or a bike ride. Walk down Winchester Road. Walk on along Crackersport Road up, up to Spring House Middle School. Cars fly on these roads. And it's not just during rush hour. It's every time of the day. You know, Winchester Road is not all that safe to walk on for adults and young kids as well. So really, you know, with the amount of children we have in this neighborhood who love to be outside, ride their bikes, I feel like this project would be an absolute disaster for Winchester Road and Crackersport Road. And the second point I'll make is this. While this is one project, sometimes it's good to take a step back and look at the bigger picture. We have the 55 and older community right to the, to the north of us. This project, which is anticipated of being put directly south of us and then, you know, over to the east of us, we have the Ridge Farms project. There's already been, as another resident clearly stated before, you know, a lot of people from the 55 and older community use 40th Street and Hampton Road to cut down through the neighborhood onto Winchester Road and out to 309. Now, this project, obviously people will use it to cut through Winchester Road. People in Ridge Farms will use, go through the neighborhood also to access 309. So I think it's just important that we, you know, we step back and we analyze the bigger picture here. Because this development with the increased traffic, the increased cars and the increased residents is just going to have an adverse effect on our neighborhood. And what is now a safe and wonderful neighborhood to live in, I fear will become something much different should this project move forward. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have there's quite a few people that want to speak by phone and I will get to you. Hang in there. So next we have Mark Stutz, 4207 Winchester Road.
Thank you. Can you all hear me?
Yes, sir.
So I've been in the neighborhood now over 30 years. So I've seen a lot of changes in that time. I'm not going to blame the people who are looking to build a new facility here for the current traffic situation. That would be foolish. They had nothing to do with that. However, but they're going to add to that situation with 300, close to 400 dwellings and the amount of cars that are, I think it's 3,000 trips a day, not 300 is actually what the number came out to be. I've raised my kids here. They moved on. I was really glad to see that young couples are moving in here and that the neighborhood is going to stay a place where young families could start and have their kids grow up safely. And I don't see that continuing when we start opening up the doors to this magnitude of traffic and issues. So totally, as, most of my neighbors are totally against this project. The schools will handle whatever they need to. I work for Parkland. We will take care of our kids always. But as far as this neighborhood concerns, I think it's a really bad idea for that kind of development. Development's needed. Something could be going there, but not like this. Thank you.
Thank you.
And next we have Susan Shortell, 4405 Parkland Drive.
Thank you. First of all, I would, I would like to reiterate that like many speakers said before me, the only way that I go to, to 22 eastbound or the Whitehall area or whatever is via Winchester Road already. Because, you know, that is the way that you're going to go to get over eastbound. You're not going to go up to 309. And, but I would like, you know, as somebody who does live on Parkland, I would like to make the point which nobody's talked about, Parkland Drive. I find it extremely surprising that the, I think somebody said it was our traffic. People did not see that Parkland and Ridgeview was necessary for any traffic study. It's like, are you kidding? I have had I don't know how many years, find out which is the bus route for the buses leaving Spring House Middle School. They certainly do not go Crackersport and Bulldog. No, where they go is they take a right on Winchester and they go up Parkland Drive, about a dozen buses regularly, daily. Because they know the impossibilities of the Ridgeview Bulldog site. They would certainly go off schedule and they're the first route of, of the daily routes if they tried that route. So they go, they go through the neighborhood. Parkland Drive not only is a narrower road, but it has a very challenging S curve as you go up towards the, towards Ridgeview. And, and there's many driveways that in that section that do back out I, I just cannot believe that that, that has been overlooked. Yes, this is far too many, far too many units and, and they also definitely will be parking on Crackersport, which will contribute to, that's also a street that is narrow. It certainly doesn't need parked cars and so forth, accessing those townhomes, which are apparently are going to have a door facing Crackersport. Trust me, I am a realtor for 30 years. I show many homes, townhouses, et cetera. And I can, I can't tell you how often those garages are used to store but cars, bikes, golf clubs, suitcases, Christmas decorations. So the idea that people would park on the street seems shocking to, you know, the developers, but trust me, that's where a lot of those cars are going to be on Crackersport. I'd like to yield to Dave Burke the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you. 30 seconds. Like water which seeks the path of least resistance, drivers do the same thing. Having lived in the neighborhood for 30 years, I can tell you that 80 to 90% of the drivers will soon find that the path of least resistance out of the luxury apartments is going to be Winchester Road. Traffic studies may say something different, but practicality and living in the neighborhood say 80 to 90% of those people are going to find Winchester Road no matter where they're going. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Lee Salt, 3731 Manchester Road.
Yes, good evening. Thanks, Dave. I'm not going to go into everybody's. I think the comments have been made tonight are very good. One thing I have a question for Mr. Huffman though. Internal traffic study, were the service vehicles for the businesses that would service the those businesses, are they included in the traffic study?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, I love, you know, I live in, in as many of the people on this phone call, I just like to put a little perspective to this. I live in the middle of all this. Hills of Winchester are to my north. Ridge, Ridge Farms is to my northwest and this is to my, to my west. And you know, we've seen our, we're seeing our land that we had that was free space now be taken over by thousands of residents. So although we can't stop them to some extent, but I may make a suggestion. The biggest complaint we see here tonight is traffic and, and also density. So I see this, the, the easy solution to this would be the developer would reduce the number of residents in the proposal. And therefore the traffic would decrease. That would make people happy. So it's just a suggestion and that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, it looks like I'm going to open it up to the callers. There's quite a few callers on here and I'm just going to open it up to all of them. If there's feedback, I will start. Three. Open. Caller six, caller seven, caller nine, caller 10, 11, 12, 14. So if you're calling
John Carrollly, can you hear me?
Yes, John Carrollly is caller 12. I will mute the other. Okay, John.
Yes, thank you. Because I think the factual argument of the problem in traffic that is created by this proposed development has been proven beyond peradventure of a doubt. I'd like to address what I believe was less than honest detailing of what the law is in this area. And, and if you check your records, you'll find that approximately 30 years ago, I represented James Molinaro, who sought the conditional use of the property located at Ridgeview and 309, that very troubled bottleneck section. And he was proposing 20 additional vehicle trips per day and the township turned him down. Also, for almost a decade, I conducted four-corner promotions at the Days Inn and which was normally the largest number of people that they had at that area. So I, I agree with everyone's concern about what the traffic would produce. But let me talk a little bit about conditional use because council for the developer seems to have conflated conditional use with permitted use. A conditional use is a special exception which falls within the jurisdiction of the municipal legislative body rather than the zoning hearing board. And the, the legislature may grant a conditional use pursuant to the express standards and criteria set forth in the zoning ordinances which were enacted pursuant to the police powers. The fact that a use is permitted as a conditional use rather than prohibited use is permitted as a conditional use rather than prohibited reflects a legislative decision that the use is not per se adverse to the public interest. But the developer still bears the burden of demonstrating that the applicant is entitled to the conditional use. And that means that he must comply with the objective standards and criteria of the particular ordinance. I have dozens of cases, if anybody's interested, but probably the most comprehensive case is in Ray Richborough, C D Partners, L P, eighty-nine Atlantic Third, seven forty-two, twenty-fourteen Commonwealth Court decision, followed by Mardel Holdings in twenty-twenty in the Commonwealth Court. Now, in, in Richborough, they had an ordinance, which it was very, is very similar to ours. And although it was a shopping center, they were dealing with the standards and principles are the same. The ordinance contained two subsections that addressed the role of an analysis of traffic impact has on conditional use proceedings, just like ours. First, the ordinance required that in determining whether a grant or denial of conditional use approval, the board shall consider the potential physical impact of the proposed use upon the neighborhood and upon nearby streets, roads, highways in terms of vehicular traffic and pedestrian safety. Second, the ordinance states as a part of the approval that the board may attach reasonable conditions after the applicant passes that test. In, in Ray Richerborough, which the Commonwealth Court has followed both before Richborough and after, counsel for the developer stated the law was clear. The law is clear and this is what it is. The, in Richborough, the board's conclusion that the conditional use would be detrimental to the hate, health, safety and welfare of the community was based upon the traffic impact. And one thing I want to point out, it's not only the number of vehicles, although that's more than sufficient in this case to disqualify the conditional approval. The courts have always said that the applicant must demonstrate that the conditional use will generate traffic patterns, not normally generated by other permitted uses and that this abnormal traffic pattern will pose, will not pose any threat to the health, safety and welfare of the, of the community. And in Richborough, the court concluded that the proposed development would create significant congestion, turning delay and increase the length at existing major intersections, meaning backups. So they held that the board and the trial court did not air or abuse their discretion in rejecting Richerborough's application for a conditional use. Now, what, what I think is important here is to understand that not only does our ordinance have those additional requirements, but that where there is a traffic pattern or a traffic impact, which is detrimental to the community, that and that alone will form the basis of denying a conditional use. And I think you have more than that. Sorry, sorry?
Your, your time, you've spent five minutes. That's the time limit.
All right. Well, thank you. I, I, I hope your solicitor, I'm sure your solicitor and opposing counsel are taking some notes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Carrollly, could you provide the site to the case that you were referring to again, please?
Yes, it's Richard Borough, C D Partners, L P. The, the head citation is in Ray Richborough, R I C H B O R O, C D Partners, comma, L period, P period, eighty-nine, A third, seven forty-two, a twenty-fourteen decision. And I have Westlaw up on my computer here and it cited with well over a hundred cases for the, for the same, for the same principles.
Thank you.
And the other case I cited was Mardel Holdings, which cites Richard Borough, which is a twenty-twenty case. That's Mardel Holdings LLC versus Orange Township Board of Supervisors. That's a Commonwealth Court case from last year and I don't have the Atlantic citation right in front of me. The other, other case which may be of interest to you, which cites the same thing is Joseph versus North Whitehall Township Board of Supervisors at sixteen, A third, at twelve seventeen. And I mean, there's just a number of cases that stand for the same proposition. I just believe there's a high probability that the traffic impact will, will pose a substantial threat to the community's health, safety and welfare, and that's been well established. And that can be established simply by traffic patterns. He's proposing traffic patterns that I haven't seen in the forty years that, that I've been here. So thank you. I don't want to take any more of somebody else's talk.
Thank you. I'm going to open it up to the callers again. Go ahead and state your name and address and I will mute the other caller.
This is Danielle Schuler, forty-three, thirty-four Valley Drive. May I speak next?
Caller eleven, I will mute the others and please proceed.
Thank you. I moved to the neighborhood five years ago. My husband and I bought our first home in Wynwood, right near St. Joe's University outside Philly. And we thought we were going to stay there. We're from Allentown, but we liked being close to the city. So we quickly realized we didn't like being in a congested suburb. And right when I had my first child, we decided to look here because we didn't want to be in a place full of apartment buildings and townhomes right next to suburbs where people buy a home and invest. And so we moved here in the hopes for a quiet, walkable neighborhood and it's been wonderful. My sister lives up the street. We've made a lot of friends. We go to the, the food trucks that Jill set up this summer. Everyone's walking there with their children in wagons and strollers and we feel safe and comfortable, but this has us completely concerned. We live on Valley Drive, so we're within a couple hundred feet of this property and development and just feel like the character of the neighborhood is going to be totally changed. And like some of the other callers said, please keep in mind the, the young families with children here that are walking and enjoying this park on Winchester, which is already pretty difficult to get to safely. We actually were almost run over three years ago walking home from the park by a car that was veering off to the side of the road and going way too fast. So I just want to ask the planning commission to please keep in mind the young families who want to stay here for decades to come and experience what everyone else got to experience in this great neighborhood in South Whitehall Township. And to keep in mind, as people have mentioned, the development just north of Target that hasn't even broke ground yet, that is going to change the traffic patterns and congestion, especially along Walbert, that's going to have a trickle down effect to all of us. You know, we picked this neighborhood because it's centrally located. My commute to work pre-COVID was twelve, thirteen minutes. And now I'm thinking, how am I going to get home to my kid's daycareing time with this sort of congestion? I already sit at the light, you know, turning off of three oh nine onto Ridgeview. You know, as a working mom, all this stuff I take into consideration. So I just want to ask you to keep that in mind, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I will open it to other callers. Any other callers that would like to speak?
No. Yes.
Caller ten.
Yes, my name is James Pamati. I'm, live on four-two-seven-two Winchester. Have a couple of questions. One, are there any proposed plans without direct access to either Cracker Sport or Winchester? And two, this land has been operating at this capacity for in excess of forty years using just Bulldog Road. So why would we impact our community with direct access to Winchester and Cracker Sport, which would be detrimental to our community? The traffic design gentleman, Rob Hoffman, when you did these tests and for traffic design in this community, did you ever experience Spring House Middle School being let out at the end of the day? With the traffic from the school buses and all of the bus stops along Winchester? Also, all of the bus stops being picked up on Winchester during rush hour in the mornings? So with all of this in mind, hopefully you could address all of those questions. And I would strongly suggest the board to deny this project because of all of the detrimental impact to this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Opening it up to other callers. Would any other caller like to speak? Please state your name. Hearing none, I will close the callers. It appears I may have missed a, someone in the chat. Is there a William Culp, fourteen forty-two Cedarwood Road? Hello, William.
Okay, I think we'll call at the end of the-
I think I see him talking. I think he's unmuted.
Oh. See if I can get him in my list. Jennifer, who? Who is it? I'm not seeing-
His name on the screen is just Bill. I don't know if it's the same they are talking, talking about, but I see that he's trying to talk into the camera.
Hello, Bill. You're unmuted on our end.
We, we can't hear.
Can he call in maybe?
Yeah. Bill, we're, Bill, we're not hearing you. You can either call in and we can get you in that way.
I, I think we're going to have to end this here.
Okay.
Okay. That's the floor. Planning Commission, any thoughts? What, what do you want to do? Alan? Can you, I, I, we have to decide. Do you have any thoughts?
Well, I think, I think we've heard a lot of comments from the neighbors and we've heard a lot from the developer. And I think it's probably about time for us to make a motion and move, move forward.
Okay. Do you want to make a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion. I would, I'll make a motion that we recommend to the Board of Commissioners that they deny the developer's application.
Second emotion.
Okay. Motion in a second. Roll call vote.
Brian Height.
Aye.
Diane Kelly.
Aye.
Bill McNair.
Aye.
Alan Tope.
Aye.
David Wilson.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
I'd just like to make a comment to all the residents who spoke tonight. I want to thank you all for your interest and participation. And I'd also like to invite you, as the township is moving forward with our comprehensive plan, to please stay involved. Check our township website for upcoming meetings because it, as we're all learning, zoning is what drives where development is placed in our community and we're getting ready for our next ten-year plan. So I invite you all to please find time to participate as you are able.
Thank you for that sales pitch, Diane.
No problem.
We'll move on to the proposed flex building. Twelve fifteen Hausman Road, major plan two thousand eighteen dash one oh six, request for preliminary final plan review. Greg?
Hang on, gotta find it. There we go. Okay. This is an application to develop the property located at twelve fifteen Hausman Road. The plan proposes the raising of the existing barn and the construction of a ninety thousand, one hundred square foot flex building, a nine-car parking lot, truck court and associated stormwater management facilities on the ten-point-seven acre tract. The subject property is zoned I C one, industrial commercial one, special height limitation. Lee Boots is the owner and Forge Development Group is the applicant. Previous consideration on February seventeenth, twenty twenty, Forge, Forge Development Group filed an application for appeal twenty twenty dash oh two, twelve fifteen Hausman Road Warehouse for variance from the requirement of, for four hundred and fifty feet of road frontage for a warehousing and distribution use. The application was subsequently withdrawn by the applicant on December first, twenty twenty. On November twenty-one, twenty nineteen, Forge Development Groups have an application for conditional use review, twenty nineteen, six oh one, twelve fifteen Hausman Road Warehouse. The application was the application was withdrawn from the December nineteenth, twenty nineteen Planning Commission agenda prior to the meeting at the request of the applicant. The application itself is still active. At their October eighteenth, twenty eighteen, the Planning Commission reviewed major sketch plan, twenty eighteen, one oh six, proposed flex building, twelve fifteen Hausman Road. And back in eighty-six, we had a favorable interpretation for a garage. So the community development recommendation is that we recommend the Planning Commission take the plan under advisement to afford the applicant time necessary to address the reviewing agency's comments. Our recommendation is contingent upon the applicant granting township a waiver from the timeframe in which to act upon the plan. The soft Planning Commission deadline was February fifteenth. The hard order commissioner's deadline is March seventeenth, twenty twenty-one.
Greg or Dave, can you put up the site plan? Thank you.
Tony, do you have that? Tony's really good at having that.
I got it. I have it for you.
Thank you.
But I didn't ask Tony.
I know, I did. Thank you, Tony.
There we are.
Is there anybody from the applicant's team that would like to either present or is trying to speak?
Yes, Blake Marlton, behalf of the applicant. This plan has been floating around for a while. We, we have Andy Baldo on behalf of Forge, who's with us this evening, as well as- who's with us this evening, as well as Paul Suezak from Liberty Engineering, who's the design engineer. At this point, it's a spec building. Mr. Butz has owned this land for a long time. Most of you will remember that he owned the land across Hausmann Road for a long time. That's where his corporate offices were before he moved into Allentown several years ago. This is now an infill project, and that's the way it's characterized in the zoning ordinance. As you see on the north and the south, this area is pretty well-developed out. This will be the last significant piece there. And I say significant advisedly because it's not a particularly large building. As flex buildings go, you see a lot of them that ten cap has along 222. And there's a need, we believe there's a need for flex space. It's been sitting for a while because we thought perhaps we could pre-market it and then be able to come in and say, we know what the use is, and that would make it easier for everybody. That hasn't been possible. Because frankly, we need to get further along in the process before anyone's interested. So although we played with the possibility of coming in and attempting to get approval for a warehouse, we're not here for that purpose. We're here for a flex building, which is a permitted use. So what we would like tonight, and we're not asking for an approval, certainly since you're seeing this for the first time, we're here for your comments. We have the staff comments. We agree with the staff that there are some things that we need to clean up before we come back to you. But we wanted to get your comments as well before we took the next step. And Greg, to your comment, certainly we'll grant an extension.
Okay. Any questions?
I saw there's some zoning comments, and I'm a little concerned that the applicant put in the cart before the horse. There's some setback issues with my opinion, the zoning really need to be ironed out prior to getting into land development and the detailed design with land development. Because those zoning items could significantly impact the design.
The zoning issues basically have to, driveways are allowed within the setback area. The staff has taken the position that a guard, a guide rail along the driveway and a wall adjacent to the driveway are structures that should not be in the setback. We'll have to look to see if we can move out of the setback without a substantial change in the plan. But we wanted to get your comments generally about the site to see if there are other issues before we begin to do the redesign, since it's been almost fully engineered.
Okay, there was one concern brought up about stormwater, and there's some variances there. But that the stormwater would be overflowing, could overflow onto, I guess that's the Hausmann there. And and I guess there's a inlet for the storm system on the northwest corner of Hausmann and Crackersport. And looking at saying, should there be a pipe to that?
Okay.
This is Paul Suezak at Liberty. Basically, the way the stormwater is designed, it's a net decrease in volume runoff going down Hausmann Road and off the site in general. It's being treated as a spray irrigation infiltration type site. I suppose if Public Works really wants a pipe down there, we could look at the feasibility of installing the pipe. We're mimicking the flow that's there now, which is a gutter flow. And we're actually catching a portion of Hausmann Road that's above our driveway and bringing it and treating it on site. So there's actually the same or less water going down to that inlet than there is today. But if the consensus is a pipe, I suppose we can install a pipe in that location.
I believe a pipe would help the conditions to Cracker Sport significantly. I've lived in this area my entire life, and it does freeze from your property all the way to the BMW dealer. I used to work at William F. Diver GMC back in the 80s. And it does become a safety issue, and then you salt it, oversalt it. So I think anything you can go above and beyond, and I'm sure Public Works would agree that that would increase the safety for the community and for your tenants as well. So I think that would be a plus.
Well, we'll look at the feasibility of installing that pipe then.
Okay.
I did have a question regarding the zoning comments. I understand the driveway and the retaining wall and guard rail. But you have a comment, I believe it's comment number five, talks about a setback of the truck court being five feet. And I'm not seeing this five-foot dimension. I'm more than 25 feet off the property line with the truck court, which I believe was in compliance. So I'm confused as to where the problem with that zoning is.
Yeah, I'm just reading the comment saying there's a 50-foot required setback and only 25 is provided. I understand that's a zoning issue that would need to be worked out with the zoning hearing board and zoning officer and everyone. So.
But that 50-foot is from the ultimate right-of-way, not from the side yard.
But yes, it seems like there's some items that still need to be worked out with that. It's
Yeah, Paul. Paul, I suggest you get in contact with Laura Harrier, so you can work that out.
Well, do you see what my issue is?
All right. Well, yeah, we have the plan on the screen. So if you want to go through it and explain it, though, that would be great.
Well, I guess my understanding is the, we can't park within 25 feet of the side property line and the edge of our paving, which is that shaded area, is clearly outside that 25-foot limit. And the ordinance, the way it's cited, is 50-foot from the ultimate right-of-way line. And we're nowhere near the ultimate right-of-way line with any paving except for the entrance driveway.
Yeah, let's contact Lauren, see if we can resolve that one. I could not.
Maybe the truck court that they're talking about. But regardless, it just needs to be worked out. So.
Okay. So there are some zoning questions that typically would be worked out and go through the zoning before it comes for land development. Any other comments, questions from the Planning Commission? Okay, open it up to public comment.
Yeah, Lorraine.
Lauren.
Lauren, sorry.
Yes. No, that's okay. Yes. I'm Lauren Bodnar, 1264 Hausmann Road, and I'm the president of Lenzanty Trucking. The concerns that I have are mostly with runoff and stormwater. My property is located between the proposed building and the computer aid building. On the computer aid side, when that was built, they gave, I think it was called an easement for the spillway. And with this building going in and the wetlands, my concern is that my property is going to take the brunt of some of this runoff. The house that is located there has sump pumps in it. And as you know, that area is extremely wet. So sometimes we do get water, which is currently handled by the sump pumps. So I'm just concerned with some of the things that are going to be going on that my property isn't going to be infiltrated with a lot of water. The other concern I had is on the drawing. There is poles that were put up by Butz at some point. I don't know when. There's three or four metal poles, and some of those do exist on my property. So I'm not sure why they were up there.
What kinds of poles?
They're like metal poles with a chain to block the driveway. The barn has already been taken down.
Yeah.
Just saying, I'm sure you know that. So it's right at the corner of the property where the drainage pit is located.
Okay.
And I had a question about the drainage pit. Is that above ground or below ground? Because it's right on my property line.
It's above ground in that location.
Okay. And can you say what that consists of? I'm just, because it's right on the property line. I didn't know if there had to be some kind of an offset for that.
It's a detention basin, is basically how it's functioning.
Okay, so it's like an open water, like to retain water?
Correct.
Okay. So again, that's fairly close to the house. So I'm just, and is there going to be any change of elevation of the property? Right now, your property is below where my property is. And I was just wondering if this is all going to be raised and the wetlands are going to be moved, will that then become an issue with stagnant water and things? I'm just worried about the impact of the water.
Are we talking, are we talking to water meter pit or?
Well, yeah, there's a water meter pit that's right on the property line.
Well, that's a below-ground chamber.
That's what I asked. Yeah, that's, I'm sorry. That's why I asked. Because I'm at 1264, which is north of.
Her property is north.
Yeah. Yes.
And stormwater will drain south.
Okay. So that is below. And then I think the other, I don't know, it was the parking lot. Is that the one that had, I had written down something from earlier with the setback? Does that have the correct setback? Because I thought there was something on page 156. It was items four, five, and six for the waiver.
We're going to talk to the zoning officer about the setback for the parking area, which is all the way at the south of the property. We think that's right, and that that may be erroneous. But
Okay.
there is a point where the driveway encroaches on the setback, again, in the immediate, as far south as the driveway gets. And driveway's permitted in the setback, but there's a retain, a wall there. And there's a guard rail. And the zoning officer's taking the position that that those are not permitted there. And so we'll have the conversation with the zoning officer as well and determine, first of all, whether she holds to that position. But if she does, whether or not we can easily move out of that setback area. And as to the pole, if there's a pole on your property, there's no reason for us to have the poles there now other than to keep people out of that driveway. So
Okay, that's fine. I just.
It certainly will go away.
Okay. I had one more question. Well, two more questions, actually. Is there, is there going to be a lot of like standing stagnant water? Because there's already a major mosquito problem down there. Yeah, it is. So are we gonna have like?
I mean, the wetlands are designed to have water in them so that they, you know, they function as wetlands. The site is dealing with its volume control requirements by spray irrigation. So the surface and the subsurface ponds that are being built as part of this project will hold water. And then that water is pumped intermittently through the spray irrigation system to disperse the water.
Okay, when it gets dispersed, I noticed that that was like, that was part overlapped onto the property, onto my property. So what does that mean? There's going to be water spraying?
No, the intended, we're not using your property for anything.
Okay. I just saw it on the one drawing, and it was like in the circle for that. But I might, I'm not an engineer, so I'm not sure what I'm looking at for some of that.
You can see like the drawing that's up now, there's a semi, there's a circle, like a dash line. That's actually representing a location of a fire hydrant.
Okay.
That's not anything to do with stormwater.
Okay. So if I have an increase of water on my property, do I have any recourse? Like if this goes through and all of a sudden my property's a swamp, what recourse do I have?
Well, it would be a property owner dispute between the two property owners. And it would be a necessity to prove that it was caused by our property. But as you can see, all the drainage facilities are to the south and you're to the north. So if anything, this should improve the situation rather than make it worse.
Okay, I was just worried, like, because there's a lot of non-permeable surfaces. I didn't know, you know, how that would affect things. And okay, I think that was, oh, the other question I had was, it appears that the widened roadway is going to come onto my property. Is that correct? I know that's probably the right of the township to do.
The widening is within the right-of-way of the road, even though it's currently not used for that purpose.
Right. So there is, I know it's within your right. Is that, so that is going to take place? That will be some widening happening on that corner?
That's what.
Okay. There's a telephone pole there? Do you know, is that going to get moved?
It will be.
Okay, all right.
Probably moved out of the paved areas.
Okay. That was all. Thank you for your time.
Thanks for your comments. Yeah, really, that's why we're here tonight, to see if there's anything that we hadn't identified.
Yeah. I do have a stormwater question in terms of the spray irrigation. That's a large component of, you know, your volume reduction, water quality, et cetera. How do you intend to utilize that during the winter months? I guess if you want to explain how you utilize the spray irrigation during winter months, the piping and whatnot.
In accordance with the DEP manuals, in the winter months, the system is turned off and winterized. And the idea that the state DEP has is that in the winter months, you're not getting the rainfall. So that the spray irrigation is actually mimicking, when you turn it off, is still mimicking existing conditions. The spray, the spray is designed to mimic conditions that are, that are, that currently go on out there. It's actually, it's becoming more and more a preferred method for disposal of stormwater. So the system itself gets winterized, and the water is just sent through, it doesn't have a volume reduction. But the theory behind it from DEP standpoint is that there's less water coming down. So we're still mimicking existing conditions.
All right. And you're confident in terms of the Act 167, and you're saying the Conservation District Stormwater Review and Act 167, that that will be sufficient and meet requirements?
Yes, we are.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the public? Or from the Planning Commission?
I'm sorry. I was gonna say, hearing none, thank you for your time. I know it's been a long evening for you.
I didn't open it to the callers. Let me just open it to callers real quick. See if there's any comment there. Does any caller wish to make a comment? Hearing only static, I will assume that's a no.
I do want to say that I appreciate that they're sidewalks. Thank you.
Okay. And we do need to get you to agree to a time extension, I think.
Yes.
And that's okay?
And he did that.
Yes.
Blake, I'll email you the form tomorrow morning.
That's fine. Thank you.
Okay, that's the the subdivision review for the day. The next item is the transportation infrastructure. Oh, wait, wait, wait.
A motion to table?
Exactly.
Okay.
Make a motion to table this matter.
Second. Who said second?
Me.
Okay, Brian.
Whatever.
Roll call?
Roll call. Brian? Roll call, Brian Height.
Hi.
Dan Kelly.
Hi.
Bill McNair.
Hi.
Alan Tope.
Hi.
David Wilson.
Hi.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay.
Thank you, good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
All right, transportation infrastructure update. Tony?
Sorry about that, I'm just switching off my screen. Thank you. Fortunately, there's, there's not a lot to speak of, you know, Penda's not doing a lot at this point, except for salting, salting and plowing, I guess, is their main goal, but I'll be in touch, there's a couple meetings come up, we'll see if there's anything else we find at the LVTS or anything, anything to that effect.
Okay. All right, thank you. Conference plan update.
I would just add, you know, not much else other than was discussed earlier, except that with these working groups that we're hoping to form, it's really important for us to get volunteers for those work, working groups. So putting out the word and encouraging, you know, public participation is a very important piece of this phase. I like to think of this phase as it's where we roll up our sleeves and start getting some of the real planning work done. So any advocacy you guys can offer to recruiting volunteers for that portion of the comp plan update is very much appreciated.
Have we considered putting a little flyer included in our, you know, one of our quarterly refuse bills or whatever go out, you know, a colored piece of paper that would draw people to the website, just to tell them this is going on, to get it in front of people?
Yeah, we had thought about putting it in the newsletter and we put something about the, the blog address. It's just with the newsletter, it's so far in advance, it's hard to really coordinate, you know, any dates or anything. But we can certainly look at putting an insert into the bills. One, one issue with that is it, they're billed quarterly, so only a portion of the township would get any flyers that we put in bills. That said, you're hitting a quarter of the town with that, so yes, it makes sense and we can do it monthly and start hitting, go through the cycle and get all of the residents that way. And we can certainly look into it. One thing with the, the new website, there's a lot more functionality with it. It's a lot easier to use, so I think we're going to start shifting more of the interactive pieces to the current website, to southwhitehall.com as opposed to the blog. We'll still use the blog for like announcements, but there's, we should have a better presence for some of these, the upcoming meetings and working groups on the new website. And putting any, like you said, a colored piece of paper in a bill, announcing that website is certainly going to help get more people out, hopefully.
Do we have the ability with this new website to do any type of sign up for alerts or push notifications that we could text?
Yeah, there's, yes, with the new website, there's a lot of functionality that we haven't gotten trained on. So, you know, the first step was getting everything up and getting everything migrated over. The next step is to start leveraging some of that functionality. There is functionality for alerts and signups and email lists. And then a kind of separate thing is we'll have signups for the working groups and those meetings RSVP things, so we have kind of an idea and auto-generated mailing lists, email lists that we can start pushing stuff out. So between the new website and using Michael Baker, I think we'll have a bigger presence with email lists and managing those lists.
Great, thank you. I didn't mean to steal your thunder earlier, but I wanted to say something before those hundred people dropped off the call.
That was great, that was fantastic, thank you.
And one other thing, I took a quick peek at the website this afternoon right before the call, David, it looks really great and thank you and the team for the, the effort to, to freshen it up and make it much more.
Yeah, it was appreciated to allow us, you know, going with that company. Really, you know, in our recommendation to pursue that company, it definitely gave us the tools to come up with a good product. So thank you for that.
Absolutely, kudos.
Have you thought about either an ad or even a press release where the Parkland Press would do an article that this is, my mother will not read the morning call anymore, but she'll read that Parkland Press religiously and circle things that your name's here again and so it's more of a community-based.
Did she have an album? That she cuts out all the articles with your name in it?
The book of sin, what my son has done. So, no, I don't think so, I don't think so, but you never know.
We do have a good relationship with Parkland Press and we do try and reach out to them to, you know, write stories or advertisements on coming things, so yes, absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
Agenda item seven, courtesy of the floor.
Today was cutoff day. We have two items for March. One is a text amendment dealing with the motor vehicle service stations and specifically the setback from one motor vehicle service station to another motor vehicle service station. I guess you can all guess who the sponsor of that one was. The other project is Cedar Brook Nursing Home Skilled Care is coming back for their second go. So you'll see them again in March.
Okay.
And you will be getting the packets for Tuesday's meeting, tomorrow afternoon or probably early evening, you know how things go. I hate to say it, but I won't get the minutes of the December and January meetings to you until Monday by email. This has been a busy week, to say the least, so I need the weekend to get the time to be focused and do minutes. So you'll see that by email on Monday.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Lee Salt, courtesy of the floor, Lee Salt, 3731 Manchester Road.
Yeah, hey, I just have a quick, Dave, I just have a quick question. We have a number of trucking facilities in the township. Are they required to have snow removal that takes the snow off the roof before they leave their facilities?
I, I don't know the answer to that.
I don't believe.
We don't. I don't believe.
It's covered by state law.
State law, I was wondering.
Yep.
Okay, all right, I don't know if that was a township thing or a state thing or whatever, but, okay.
Yeah, I think in the future, look at amenities for that, along with any kind of, although we don't have much land for large-scale trucking operations, but I know it's a lot safer if they're off the roof and compliant with the law.
Yeah, so I did follow up, there are some townships that have implemented that recently. I think LVPC, if I'm not mistaken, just came out with an ordinance on a year or so ago that kind of goes through trucker amenities, parking for trucks within, you know, rather than having them pulled over off the side of the road, but within a site and then some items regarding snow removal, a handful of items to try and keep them in places at and keep them safer. So there, there are definitely opportunities to maybe incorporate that somehow.
To just to piggyback off that, when George was here, he, and Greg will know exactly where it was, but I think they incorporated the, a lot of those amenities into either the use schedules for warehousing, but I know that some additional amenities that have been incorporated into our ordinance.
I don't think snow is in there yet, but it should be.
I don't know that snow was. I was just checking to make sure that George didn't sneak that one in.
He, he's, snow is probably the furthest thing from his mind.
I know the LVPC has been adding that as like standard language in any kind of logistics and distribution things, so.
And we can, we can certainly reach out to the LVPC and try and get, you know, some guidance on language for that.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the courtesy of the floor? Any, do we open it to callers?
I can open up caller six and 14. Any callers wish to?
Okay. I'll, any, motion to adjourn?
Moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everybody, thank you, Tony, Jennifer, Dave, Greg.
Thank you.
Thank you, Diane.